2021 Planning Commission Transportation Committee Meeting. This committee provides an opportunity to have an in-depth conversation with items contained on the agenda. Items can be referred to the committee to explore issues and identify impacts of a request. The committee discussion is less formal as compared to the Planning Commission meeting, and there are generally no time limits for the speakers. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator, Keegan McDonald. I would ask the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. Finally, um, sorry, please be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. Our only discussion item on the agenda today is TC 321. This text change would modify certain street cross-sections to alter the placement of bicycle facilities. This is the first time the case has been discussed. I would like to ask for a staff presentation from Paul Black, Transportation. Mr. Black, it's all yours.
All right. Hi, I'm Paul Black with the Department of Transportation here at the city. I work for transportation planning, and I'm gonna go, this is a recommendation that came from the B-PAC. I'm gonna go ahead and share a screen. And we will get started. So you can see the overview really goes back to the comprehensive plan. All of the UDO cross-sections are tied to map T1, which is our street type map. But there's an additional map, T dash three, that deals with all of the bicycle facilities. And what we found was that there were bicycle facilities that were not getting implemented from the comp plan when we were implementing the street section from T1. There are places where they didn't necessarily line up. So we were having to try to play catch-up and find ways to make those things happen. Another major change is that in the bicycle community in general, on the national level, that the conventional bike lanes that you see with just a stripe of paint are showing that they're not as effective as we would like them to be. And so trying to get some kind of vertical separation, in this case, by moving them behind the curb is one other part of that. So if you look at map T3, you can see the bicycle lanes are in blue, but those separated facilities in particular, which are on major arterials where we have high volumes and high speeds, those were not getting implemented with development. And that was the catalyst that started this conversation with B-PAC.
So the Excuse me, Mr., excuse me, Paul, can I ask that you put that in presentation mode? It looks like it's not presentation mode on my screen, so it's kinda small.
That's fine. I am always scared that presentation mode is not going to work, but I will give it a shot.
Oh, okay.
We still good?
Um, well. Hold on. We have a bunch of gray squares here, so you can do what works for you. It was just small, so I couldn't really see it, but I can read the text. It was just the map that was really small.
Okay, understood. I'm gonna end it as a slideshow, and I'm still sharing the screen, I think. I apologize if it's small.
I can still see it. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, if it worked, that would have been great, but again, technology always has limitations, so I try to keep it simple as possible. So just some dumb sidebar background. I was the IT person for Durham City County Planning a long time ago, before the city actually ran a citywide IT. So I always try to keep it simple. As a technology guy, I don't trust it. It's always fickle. But back to the presentation. When B-PAC looked at all of the different street types, we realized that we could probably get 90% of what was, we were missing, and then some additional improvements to what was in the original map T3 by looking at our avenue street types. And by moving the bicycle facilities behind the curb on all of the avenue street types except for the sensitive areas, this would really address most of the need in the city. There are still some places in downtown that would get missed. We may come back at some point in the future to try and remedy that, but this really gets at 90% of the parts of the city where we're having these issues. So we initially started out looking at six lane and four lane sections. Then we had our own engineering department came to B-PAC with a couple of streets, and council concurred that putting a striped bike lane on some of these higher-speed facilities probably wasn't the outcome we really wanted anymore. And council asked us to go back and look at some of these as well indirectly. Those were Barwell Road and Paul Road where we have capital projects. And the recommendation there from B-PAC was to move those behind the curb as well. So we'll start with the two-lane avenue undivided. You can see that this is, Keegan, I wanna say this looks like the current, and this would be the proposed. It is a slightly bigger ask in terms of the right-of-way. We, B-PAC did their best to try to keep it as small of an additional ask as possible. But there is some sort of give-back on the other side in that by not putting the bicycle lane in the roadbed, it doesn't need to hold a semi. Right now, if you build a bike lane in the street, it's gotta be built with all of the underlayment and gravel to hold a truck. By moving it behind the curb, we don't have to build it quite to that standard. So there you can see the changes. So you can see that the right-of-way width does get wider, but the back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb gets smaller. And then the other change is you can see that bike lane G moves out of the travelway and moves up into the streetscape part. And this will be repeated for all the different cross-sections. So that was, that was the foreshadowing of what's to come. This is the same thing on a divided section. The new one does the same thing. It moves the bike lane behind the curb. One question we've had is, why not a multi-use path? That was discussed at B-PAC, and there were two primary reasons. One was from the pedestrian community, particularly the visually impaired. If we don't have to mix bikes and pedestrians, that's preferable for folks who are walking. The other had to do with clear zones. Where we have NC DOT streets, the bike lane actually acts as part of the clear zone that allows us to place street trees. And the street trees are a big part of the pedestrian environment, both in terms of feeling safer, having a barrier between moving cars and pedestrians, and for shade, which makes it more comfortable. This, this is the south. It gets hot here. And there you can see the actual text in the changes. Again, you can see the right-of-way ask is slightly larger, but the curb-to-curb is smaller. And that's just the continuation. That was a relatively long one. So three lane, we also looked at parallel parking. We looked at a number of different configurations on this at the B-PAC. And ultimately, the recommendation was to sort of stick with the standard and go ahead and just put it behind the curb. These had a slightly bigger ask in terms of right-of-way. But again, you can see the curb-to-curb shrinks quite a bit. Part of that is also that the bike lanes, when you've got a gutter pan, the two feet of gutter pan don't count towards the bike way, but they do count toward the parking. So where we've got the parallel parking, we get that back on the curb-to-curb as well. And again, there is the rest of the table. And then on to a four lane with parallel parking. That's the existing. This is the proposed. And here's the table, similar kind of changes. And here's just divided without the parallel parking. Here's the proposal. And then here's how it looks in the table. Sorry if I'm going fast, but they're all very similar in terms of what the ask is. And then six lane, this is the current. This is the proposed. And then there's the corresponding table. So the impacts, again, just kind of to reiterate, it does allow a smaller roadbed, but the inclusion of the buffer between the bike lane and the curb, and that does make construction costs cheaper. And that is it. A lot of information to digest. Luckily, most of it is similar in nature as we go through. And with that, I will stop sharing and let the, bring the panel back.
Great, thank you, Paul. Now I'd like to hear from any members of the public who have signed up to speak. Keegan, I think you said we had one person?
Yes, that's right. I have Mary Sell on the line, so I will go ahead and unmute them now.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Sell, if you wouldn't mind, can you please provide your name and address for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Mary Sell. My address is 1178 Hain Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. Thank you so much for taking my public comment today. I work with Oaks and Spokes, which is the local advocacy organization for biking, walking, people-powered mobility here in Raleigh. We're really encouraged to see these cross-sections being proposed. B-PAC, you know, a few years back had put this recommendation forward, and we're really glad to see that staff has continued to work on it and bring it forward to the Planning Commission. One thing I think you'll all recognize is the existing facilities that we have in Raleigh are probably not all ages and abilities. If you're looking at an eight to 80 city, you're not seeing a lot of younger users feeling comfortable using the bike lanes that we currently have or older ones. You kind of have that competent demographic of people that feel comfortable in mixed traffic, feel comfortable on a conventional bike lane. So we're really encouraged to see the city moving toward a better industry standard. I do have a little bit of feedback on the existing proposed cross-sections. As we're looking at a five-foot bike lane, that is really, really a bare minimum. If you look at NACTO, which is a pretty reputable source for transportation, looking at best practices, they do advise a six-and-a-half-foot bike lane. I think, you know, as we think about our sidewalks or even a driving lane, we would never ask like a pedestrian to walk behind their child. We would assume that they would be able to walk side, or, you know, bike or walk side by side. So a six-and-a-half-foot lane is going to, again, encourage that all ages and abilities by providing enough room for perhaps a child and a parent to ride down that bike line together. Another consideration, and I provided some written comments to you all as well via email, is thinking about the buffer. Again, I think we have kind of the bare minimum in place because staff are looking to proceed forward with the most minimal impact, which I completely understand. But the smaller the buffer is, the more likelihood you have that a car could encourage a right hook where there's less of a buffer between the car and the bike as it's proceeding forward down the separated bike lane. A larger buffer would just change that turning movement a little bit and provide that much more of a buffer before that vehicle is in conflict with that bike. So again, I'm really encouraged to see these happening. Let me just reference my notes. Again, I think, you know, Paul did reference this briefly, but none of these proposed changes would impact our downtown, which is an area that organically has a higher utilization of people who might be car-light or car-free. And it is important for us to identify what our solution is for our urban environment, recognizing that this text change will not help to facilitate any type of separated bike lane in that, you know, the Christmas plan, that downtown core. So that is something that I think could be an iterative conversation, given that it has been years in the making with this text change. I would hate to see it be delayed further. So I would be, I would encourage this iteration to move forward with, you know, from the advocacy community, we would advise as large of a bike lane as possible. I think five foot, again, is the very bare minimum that you would want to consider. Six-and-a-half feet is the emerging industry standard, and that's what NACTO advises right now. And that buffer to continually be thinking about how we could or should improve that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sell. Would staff like to respond to any of Ms. Sell's comments?
I don't have anything specific. Eric, I see Eric Lamb is on. Do you have anything?
Yeah, and I'd be the first to admit, I'm not aware of the context for the six-and-a-half-foot standard that Ms. Sell is referencing with NACTO. For the committee's clarification, these are intended to be one-way bike lanes behind the curbs. These are not two-way facilities.
Right.
Keegan, I don't know if I have the ability to share my screen. I do have a shot of the Blue Ridge bike lane that we have in place.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide you with sharing capability, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, you should have it now.
Thank you very much. So we did a pilot of this, working with the North Carolina Museum of Art a couple of years ago. Now, this cross-sectional standard is a bit wider than what staff is currently recommending, but you get the idea of what it is that we're trying to accomplish with this type of separation. And as Ms. Sell pointed out, we are, we are trying to develop a network that is more fostering what we refer to as the eight to 80 bandwidth of users. And so this is the type of facility, we, a lot of comments from, from general users that riding bikes in bike lanes in the street is uncomfortable. And that's not creating the environment where we can encourage more usage. And encouraging more usage shifts our roadshare to another we can do in that regard. So this is, this is part of our strategy, is moving the bike lanes behind the curb. This is a five-foot bike lane in place. It's out along the Art Museum frontage, and I think it's a slightly wider. This is an eight-foot sidewalk. So, so the dimensions that we're looking at here are a little bit wider than what we are currently recommending, but it's the same philosophical bent. One of the things that this allows us to do is when we get to intersections, we then get to start to look at options for what are known as protected intersections. And as I've told people in the past, the, the nature of bicycle facility design in the United States is extremely fluid. There has been a very rapid evolution of the technology and the acceptance of alternative designs that are more akin to what you would normally see on the European front, now starting to be utilized and tested here domestically. This is a 2015 publication showing protected intersection designs. And as you can see, it facilitates the flow, I don't think it's my mouse, but facilitates the flow of one-way traffic in turn safely around an intersection while keeping the footprint of the intersection compact. And this is actually what we have currently in design for the intersection of Blue Ridge and Reedy Creek Road, capitalizing on those one-way bike lanes behind the curb and bringing them into an intersection. So, so this is an evolution of sorts. The key thing here is that we are, we would now be setting the standard for new development and also setting a template for city projects as well. But most importantly, creating the dynamic for exactions by the city in concert with new developments to take place to meet those standards. Again, that is more of a piecemeal process, but it allows us to start working, especially in newly developing areas. For example, as, as we've discussed with the commission earlier this week, all of the development happening around the Buffalo Road area. And that's essentially virgin territory as it relates to a very immature transportation system. So what you would see ostensibly is with this type of text change approved, all of that new development would then be held to implementing these new cross-sections as part of development. So it's a very rapid layer of implementation for those developing areas.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. I'll bring it back to the commission now, the committee now. Does anybody have any questions? The commissioners, I can't see anybody. It's blanked out. Hold on. It's coming back. Okay, Commissioner Lempman, did I see your hand?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it blanked out for me too, just had a quick question in terms of the relationship between the sidewalk and then the bike lane. So this is gonna be a bike lane that is for two-way bike traffic essentially. The sidewalk, are we gonna have some sidewalk on both sides? And then furthermore, I thought that sidewalks had also had a debate at one point to get to six-and-a-half feet, if I'm recalling correctly. So I didn't know if there's any sort of thought in terms of how the two support each other, and then I assume it'll just be implemented as new development along.
Okay, so a couple things. So number one, these are one-way bike lanes. So not, these will not be bi-directional, but there'll be bike lanes on each side of the street.
Okay.
Sidewalks, when the UDO was implemented, we increased our standard to six feet. I'm not aware of any conversations actively right now to increase that standard to six and a half. But the city's current standard is six feet for suburban treatments. Wider for urban frontages and for the downtown environment, as wide as 16 feet in some of those contexts.
Did you have another question, Commissioner? Okay, are there any other questions from the commission committee? Sorry, commission committee. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bennett. I have a handful of questions. And I had a, some kind of computer glitch, so I missed Commissioner Lempman's question. So if I carry over on to something she asked, I apologize. Mr. Black, can you, can you go back and explain again why these are quote-unquote, I think you said, being missed?
Yeah, so right now, all of the street standards for new development are tied to the street type, which is map T dash one in the comp plan. There's a corresponding map, T dash three, further down in the chapter, that also calls for these changes in the street, but they are not codified in the tables. And so they were being missed. In fact, the project that brought it to light for us was when Seaboard was developing their frontage along Key Street. Key Street in map T3 calls for a separated bike lane, but the street frontage for the, the street type was a conventional bike lane. And so that's where it ended up at the end of the day, because the T1 map has got that kind of umbilical cord from the comp plan right into the table. And the map T3 just doesn't have that. And so this is a way to try and remedy that disconnected.
So by making these text changes, because I didn't see anything specifically that said you referenced map T3. But I guess if y'all are telling me that this remedies that, I'll, I'll, I'll go for it. I see Eric shaking his head, so that's cool.
Yes, sir, that is indeed the case. This moves us away. Again, map T3 is guiding policy. It doesn't have the map that the, the cross-sections do, and for map T1, for example, for our streets. What this does is by making this part of the city's adopted standard for streets, it would, it would supersede the recommendations of T3.
Okay. I'm flipping through, and I just, I find it interesting. It might be helpful. And I don't know that we need to do it now, but I'm just trying to figure out, the increases aren't consistent. And I'm trying to flip back and forth and be like, because there are two different kinds of graphics. And so you've gotta read one on the table and one on the cross-section. And I'm just trying to figure out where the increases to the right-of-way are. And I, I understand that the roadbed is smaller, but the right-of-way is larger, which, and in some cases, it's not very much at all. But I'm just curious, because I could imagine some of our friends will say, well, that's great, the roadbed's smaller, but you're taking more of my property, which also has a cost to it. And so I just think we need to be able to identify where those increases are. And if I would have done my homework a little bit more, I'd have obviously figured it out, but it's, it's just really hard. So I don't know if you have a quick, we don't need to dive into the depths of it, but if you sort of have a quick overview of where those, where those are occurring.
Sure, it's relatively simple with respect to, we're taking 10 feet of asphalt that currently is within the street footprint and taking that 10 feet and putting it behind the curbs. But by doing that, we have to add a little more buffer space in there. The difference that you're seeing where it's not consistent is between the, the standard avenue sections and the avenue sections with on-street parking. So when we have on-street parking present, we have to have a larger buffer between the bike facility and the door zone. So allow for people for on-street parking to open the car door and not interfere with the bike lane at that point. So that is why those sections have a slightly larger right-of-way ask than the conventional avenue sections.
Gotcha. Well, I'll study that a little bit more.
But you're 100% correct that that is the trade-off that we're talking about here, that we would be going to a slightly larger right-of-way increase for the purposes of a higher-order bicycle facility.
No, I get it. I just, I have a feeling we'll probably be asked some questions about it, so I just wanna make sure we're all square. I did have a question. Ms. Sell was mentioning a buffer, but then she started talking about the right turn lane. So she's still on. Were you talking about that two-to-three-foot buffer? Or were you talking about those intersections like Eric showed in the graphic?
Specifically about the buffer. Oh, okay, sounds like I'm unquoted or unmuted. Yeah, I was talking specifically about the buffer relating to, you know, the bike lane coming through, because if you have a wider buffer, that provides a wider vantage for the vehicle to see the bike.
At the intersections, I'm looking at these cross-sections and like for the four-lane divided, there's a one-foot buffer. Six-lane divided is one foot. But I thought I saw, yeah, one in the four-lane parallel is three foot. That's where Eric's talking about. That's increased. So are you talking about that area, or are you talking about, because I heard you talking about a right turn and being able to, the, the, the visual cues of bikers at the intersections?
Right. And to be clear, if we're doing protected intersections, like are being proposed on that one project, that's kind of a different nut to crack. So I think, you know, the big emphasis is that intersections need to be addressed. Otherwise, it won't be safe for the biker if there's visibility issues, especially with on-street parking as they are coming down the bike lane and a car is turning. I'm not sure if that provides clarification, but if you have a wider buffer, it would provide additional safety for the bike rider, understanding that that's a trade-off to be considered.
Okay, thank you. I did have a question too. Let me find it again, so y'all know I did look at it since I called myself out for not doing my homework, but there's four lane, yeah, four-lane divided, existing avenue, four-lane divided. Slide 20 of 26. You've got, on the right-hand side of the cross-section, you've got a 4.5-foot bicycle lane. On the left-hand side, you have a five-foot.
It's okay. That, that's a typo in the graphic, and we'll fix that before we bring it to city council. The, the table is correct.
Okay, all right then. That's cool.
This is, um, Keegan McDonald. I, I just wanted to make a general comment for the committee's benefit that these graphics are really just for example purposes and that they, the final graphics will be incorporated once the text change is adopted, just in terms of how they appear. So it's kind of an imperfect program that we're working with, as I understand it. But the final graphics will mirror those that are in the code today, which are shown in the PowerPoint on the existing cross-sections. So I just wanted to let the committee know.
I, I, I think these are easier to, I think the ones that y'all have done with this other program is easier to read than what's in the code, but I'll leave that up to y'all. And then I do have a question about downtown. So none of these cross-sections come through downtown. I heard Ms. Sell mention the Christmas plan. I'm working on a handful of projects currently in downtown. One along West Street with the cycle track and, you know, trying to get buses and cars and people and bicycles in a 66-foot right-of-way is challenging. And there's a lot of competing interests there, and there's a lot of different departments that we need to go through at the city. And it's been, it's been, as y'all know, I know Eric, you've been involved in some of these conversations. Does any of this apply to downtown? Because I do think there could be some issues there.
Right. And the answer is generally no. The, you know, the William Christmas Plan, Raleigh was one of the last colonial design cities in the late 1700s. And so we're relatively stuck with those 66-foot rights-of-way on most of the downtown streets that are within the north, south, east, and west street grid. So in those situations, we're looking at making retrofits with city projects, as we've done recently with West and Harrington Street. Outside of that grid, we have a little more flexibility because the footprint starts to open up on those street rights-of-way as they are a little bit newer. And certainly outside of the core of downtown, things tend to open up quite a bit once you can do post-war, post-World War II development. But within the downtown grid, everything's a challenge and everything's a trade-off, and we're gonna have to deal with those on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
And, and it's a real, you know, conversation as far as our burgeoning transit system, balancing the needs for multimodal transportation and still supporting the businesses and, and the expectations for on-street parking and trying to balance all those things. It's, it's never dull around here.
Exactly. And then my last question, I guess that SB on these temper, or, you know, interim sections stands for, is that setback? temper or, you know, interim sections stands for, is that setback?
If it's anything that's, if there's a, there's typically a one or two-foot buffer on the back of the sidewalk that's consistent with the city code now for where we have the utility strip. Anything behind that is illustrative as far as the setback goes.
Okay, okay. All right, great. All right, that's all my questions. Thank you, Chair Bennett.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver. You asked some of mine too, so that was actually good. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, is anybody ready to make a motion? Do we need more information or something else you need staff to, to do? Or what's, what's your pleasure here?
I think, I, I think for me, I'd just like to understand a little bit more about the additional right-of-way requests. I mean, that's, that's, you know, there's an impact there. There's a real monetary impact there to people developing property. I know it's not a lot, and that's why I would like to get more comfortable with it. I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to send it out, because overall, I, I agree with it. I think it's great. If, if you'll allow me to, before it comes before the full commission, to perhaps just make any comments at that point at the full meeting, I doubt I'll have any, but if y'all would be cool with that, I'm, I'd be happy to vote it out. I like it, I think it's great.
I think that would be fine, right? Mr. York, we can still comment on it at the full planning commission meeting.
Yes, you can. Normally what happens is if the committee makes a recommendation for approval or denial, then the chair reports that out. Then if, if there's no further issues to discuss, then the chair often makes the motion consistent with what the committee asked for. But yeah, you can, and given the report, you could report it, that this is what the committee recommended. However, and I guess you can double-check with Commissioner Haver before the planning commission meeting to see if he wants to say anything. If he doesn't, then you could just say so moved and it moves on. If he wants to say something, you'd say before we make a motion, I'd like to recognize Commissioner O'Haver.
Okay. Commissioner O'Haver, if that, that's fine with me. So if that works for you, are you ready to make a motion?
I think so. I didn't see the, it wasn't a consistency statement in our backup. So I pulled up our old worksheet. So Mr. York, just keep me inside the rails there. I move to recommend approval of TC 321. The rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest and is supported by these specific policies in the comprehensive plan. Policy T 5.15 facilities for all ages. Policy T 3.1 complete street implementation. Policy T 5.2 incorporating bicycle and pedestrian improvements and policy T 1.3 multimodal transportation design.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lempman has seconded the motion. We need to do a vote, or do we just raise our hands, Mr. York?
Because this is not the formal recommendation of the planning commission, but just the committee's recommendation to the full commission, you can do by just raising a hand and then report the vote.
Great, so we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, that's unanimous, three zero. It will be recommended for approval to use the full commission.
Madam Chair, if we can make ourselves available, if Mr. O'Haver has additional questions about the right-of-way standards in between now and, and next planning commission meeting.
Okay, great.
I know how to get ahold of you, Eric.
Thank you. Well, do we have any other business? I think that's it. We got through this in record time, look at us. We have time to breathe before the committee of the whole meeting. I'd just like to thank Mr. Black for the presentation and Mr. Lamb for being available to answer questions. Thank you, committee members. And if that's it, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.